Just quick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy tax day. This is where you groan. Happy tax day. Yeah, there you go. Well, today is April 15th. And we appreciate you being here today. Got some new faces here with us and some, I was gonna say old ones. I didn't mean it that way. Some familiar faces, so it's good to have you here with us tonight. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across the country that we start by doing a couple of things. We're gonna have a pledge that will invite you to join us in. But we, as commissioners, we begin with what's called a solemnizing prayer. We have our chaplain that's gonna come and lead the commissioners. That a solemnizing prayer is for us. It's not for you. I see the jealousy all over your face. But we do this because we take very seriously what we do and we look for wisdom as we seek to do those things that are in the best interest of all the people of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, thank for this beautiful day provided for us. Thank for an opportunity to be here tonight. Thank for our county commissioners, Lord, and the preparation they've made for this meeting tonight and the work they do behind the backgrounds, Lord. We thank you for all that they do for us and for our county, Lord Jesus, and we thank you for those who are represented here today. We pray you'll guide and lead them, give them the wisdom they need today. Thank you for your blessings upon us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Welcome back. Thank you for sending your son a couple of weeks ago. Enjoyed that? I know that sounded like an Easter statement, didn't it? All right, well, we'll move ahead. All right, commissioners, I have one agenda change you received from Ms. Carolyn. The addition for the tax, let's see, the Board of Equalization and Review, some applications. We're just gonna add that unless there's a, we have an issue with that. We'll just add it as item G to the consent agenda. Item G. Are there any other additions or deletions that anyone has? If not, do we have a motion to prove the agenda is amended?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And public comment? Anyone signed up for public comment? Ronnie's not here? No? Okay.
Inviting.
All right, we'll move on. Would like to say Judy Klusman, Commissioner Klusman's out today. She had shoulder surgery last week and it's given her some fits. So anyway, she's at home recuperating from that. We wish her well. The minutes of...
Consent agenda.
Yeah. We have the minutes been provided for us. We have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we'll move to item number three then, Scott. Scott Shelton, he's our... All right, we added it. All right, good. Thank you, guys. So consent agenda's been amended, so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys, for...
No problem.
Thank you. All right, now Scott.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Here today to present an incentive request on behalf of Project Special. This is a potential $18 million investment in Rowan County, which will generate about $1.1 million of revenue for the county over the next 10 years. Would also lead to the creation of 35 new jobs by the end of 2020. And it is, again, an existing employer. Talking about an existing industry expanding in Rowan County. The company is an advanced manufacturer. They've been around for several years. They are an international company with foreign owners and employ a large number of people in our community now. They're considering Rowan for an expansion and competition for this is a facility in Texas, also a facility in Europe. Again, have chosen, the company would create 35 new jobs by the end of 2020. Average pay for these jobs would be in excess of $41,000, about 20 bucks an hour with benefits. And again, invest $18 million in new equipment, new construction, and upgrades to the existing facility. The majority of these improvements will be completed by the end of 2019. And you may have seen some of the numbers in there. There's a lot of investment upfront. And in my discussions with the company, and this project has changed, at least the timelines have changed quite a bit recently, the majority of that money's equipment. They are talking about some new construction. Estimated amount for that is about $2 million, and that would be done by the end of 2020. But still, as far as the numbers go, the bulk of it would be by the end of 2019. That new equipment would be in place by December 31st. No zoning issues we are aware of. Of course, the company would work with local planning officials in the county building inspections department to make sure everything's fine, but we don't anticipate any issues there. As far as the assistance request for tonight, the company is requesting a level-one grant, which of course pays 75% of the taxes generated to the company for a five-year period. Based on everything we've been given so far, they seem to meet the criteria for a level-one grant. And the numbers presented for you are based on the current tax rate, of course, of 66.25 cents. And again, we assume that about 12 million of this work will be done by the end of 2019. But the overall project will be done by 2023. What I mean by that is, again, most of the equipment would be by the end of 2019, building by 2020, but then according to the company, they'd invest about $2 million per year in new equipment for the following three years, so it would end up around 2023. And those are the numbers there that were presented earlier. And again, as far as the incentive agreement and the money that would be generated for the project, over the first five years, the county would collect about $516,000. Total incentive grant over five years would be about $387,000. And over that five-year span, the county would retain about $129,000. Over 10 years, county would collect about $1.1 million, disperse that $387,000 grant I mentioned, and keep about $725,000 of new revenue. And we talk about this every time, but I'll say it again, just for those in attendance, it would be a grant paid in five-year, I'm sorry, five annual installments over five years. They can only get payment after they've paid their taxes in full. And of course, if they didn't meet the job goal stated in the agreement, the grant would be reduced on a prorata basis till the goals were met. If the company were to cease operations or eliminate the majority of its workforce, the agreement would be terminated, and they'd be required to repay about three years' worth of prior grant payments. In closing, again, 35 new jobs. In over five years, the county would retain about $129,000 of new tax revenue, retain about $725,000 over 10 years. And we ask the commissioners to consider this tonight to support a valued existing employer.
Could you go back one slide for me? Company were to cease operations, eliminate the majority of its workforce, 51% or more within 12 months. Is that 12 months of this agreement?
Well, if they were to eliminate, over a 12-month period, they would eliminate 51% of their workforce. That's when the grant would be terminated. So it could be any time during the course of the grant agreement.
Okay. So in the fourth year, if they eliminated 51% or more, would the agreement be terminated and then the prior three years be required?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
It's throwing me a little bit.
That's, yeah, that wording's not the same as the agreement. It's 51% during any 12-month period because we define closing as eliminating of 51% or more of your workforce. We consider that to be closing down.
Okay. Do we really need, so for the purposes of our public hearing and our vote, I did not pick up on that in our documents. So Jay, in our document, is it written differently?
Yes.
And how does it, can you put your fingers on that?
Yeah, I do. It's under Article IV. Article IV, Section 2.
It's eliminate more than 51% within a 12-month span is the agreement.
Okay. All right, any questions for Scott?
And one thing too, Mr. Chairman, is regarding the timeline for this project, we are expecting a decision in probably late May or early June, so...
All right, we'll hang out there for us. We're gonna have a public hearing, and so we do this in case someone would like to come to ask questions or to speak about the public's interest in incentives that we're providing. And so if anyone would like to get up and speak for or against or neutral, that would be the time. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have any discussion? Any questions for Scott? I would like to say to Scott, one thing that I'm really happy that you guys are doing, you've got, one of your staff is spending a lot of time on our existing clients. Lot of us that are in business up here know that if the back door's open and you got more people leaving than coming in, then you're not growing very much. So the fact that you've made a concerted effort to start working with existing business and seeing what they need to do is really important to the overall economic development plan, so, you know, well done on this.
Thank you.
Any questions for Scott? Do we have a motion then to approve project, the incentive agreements for Project Special?
So moved.
All right, any further discussion? Mike, anything? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item number four, proclamation for Law Enforcement Week. This comes from Chaplain Taylor. We've got a couple of things on here. This is a, wanna read this? Mike, you wanna read this for us? This proclamation? Do you have it available?
Sure. Proclamation Law Enforcement Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a presidential proclamation to set aside May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week of May 13th through 19th is National Police Week. And whereas the members, the members of all the law enforcement agencies in Rowan County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all of our citizens, and whereas is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And whereas members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duties to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas law enforcement officers past and present have faithfully and loyally rendered a dedicated service to this county and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation to preserve the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 12th through 18th, 2019 as Law Enforcement Week. Now therefore be it further proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners call upon all citizens of Rowan County to observe May 15th, 2019 as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courage, courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of all fallen heroes. This the 15th day of April, 2019.
Thank you, commissioners. You offer that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Greg, thank you. I think you're the only law enforcement officer here, but we appreciate your service to this community and all those who stand in the way of bad things out there. We really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. The next item, item number five, proclamation to establish May as Shield of Badges with Prayer Awareness Month. And I'll go ahead and read this unless you want to. Okay. Proclamation to establish May as Shield of Badge with Prayer Awareness Month, whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer program works to affirm the commitment of Rowan County law enforcement officers and encourages citizen awareness and appreciation for these officers. Whereas the program invites citizens to commit to pray for an officer every day for one year and to send birthday cards and notes and thanks to these officers. And whereas through the generosity of individuals, businesses, and churches that have donated services and fundraisers, 10,000 Bibles, 3,700 Shield of Badge Bible Promise books, and 11,000 New Testaments have been purchased to be given away. And whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer program began in 1995 in Rowan County by Chaplain Michael Taylor and has begun to expand statewide, reaching out to other counties, municipalities, colleges, hospitals, correctional facilities, 911 communicators, probation officers, animal control officers, state highway patrol officers, fire departments, clerk of court employees, magistrates, judges, district attorney offices, county commissioners, sheriffs, and attorneys. Whereas through the dedication and travels of Chaplain Taylor, counties from across the state are receiving encouragement and training for chaplains. Therefore, let it be proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby establish the month of May as Shield of Badge with Prayer Awareness Month this 15th day of April, 2019. And Chaplain Taylor, we certainly are very appreciative of what you do to represent not only yourself, but this community and upholding those and praying for their constant safety. It's a wonderful thing. So we honor you today. Do we have a, I offer that in the form of a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chaplain.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, could maybe speak a minute about it?
Yeah. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you for these two proclamations. On May the 15th, we'll be having our memorial service at First Presbyterian Church here in Salisbury to honor those who've given their lives in the line of duty, not only in Rowan County, but all across the state in the past and also this past year or two. So I'd invite everybody to come to that service. It's a very touching service, and we appreciate those who've given their lives so that we might have the law upheld in this state and this county. And we appreciate them wanting to do what they did. And we certainly pray for the families this tough time for them to come and remember that their loved one gave their lives, that we might have the freedom that we have to be able to do what we need to do. And our Shield of Badges program, I thank God for that program that God laid out upon my heart to be able to do that. This is our 24th year since we started that program, and I attribute the prayers of God's people that we have had few officers hurt in the line of duty or their lives taken, and I believe that's because of prayer. God answers prayers, and I would encourage anybody who's not a part of this program to let me know. We'll be glad to line you up, any church individual. Everybody should have a desire to pray for our safety of our officers, and we appreciate them and appreciate what they do. And it's my heart, I just have a heart for law enforcement and what they do. Thank you, county commissioners, for your support.
Thank you very much, Chaplain. All right, item number six from the Finance Department regarding the inmate healthcare services provider. Greg, are you, you gonna talk about this?
Good evening, guys. We let this thing out for bid for inmate healthcare. I think we've been going, is it five years now?
Five years with the current provider.
So we felt it was time to go out. We're having some, a little bit of dissatisfaction with the current provider. We wanted to go out and test the waters a little bit and see what's out there. And we'll let Greg talk a little bit more about ins and outs of what we're getting and what we're trying to look forward to.
I wasn't completely prepared to do this. I actually have the owner of the company and a representative from the company here, but the first couple of things that I would like to say is, back when this contract was initiated, our jail population was in the 200s. Currently, we're looking at usually around 350, somewhere between 330, 350 inmates per day. So the initial 16 hours that were contracted for were probably adequate then. They are very, very inadequate now, and I've requested bids, when David and I talked about it, for 24-hour coverage on our nursing staff. We have two main nurses now. One of those nurses averages somewhere around 97 hours per pay period. She don't get compensated for anything over 80. The other secondary nurse averages around 86 hours per pay period. That's a two-week pay period, and she does not get compensated. Those two are providing this service to keep this county free from litigation and keep the inmates safe and healthy, as well as our officers, safe and healthy at no charge. One of them, the main lady, was 39 weeks pregnant and ended up with 100 hours working. So there's definitely a need for it. We've been, you know, really lucky to have some good nurses available to us. We have had a lot of issues getting her support from the current provider. So without trying to bash any current providers, I'm gonna leave it at that, and we're just a little dissatisfied with it. They know it. We know it. Everybody is aware of it. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Oakfor, and, I'm sorry, what's your, Matt Head, to step up. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask them. Mr., Dr. Oakfor, I believe, is the founder of the company. Y'all come on up.
Captain, before he starts, I'd just like to make the board aware of a few things. And during the presentation, I would like for some clarification about the mental health services and whether or not we're gonna participate in that and why or why not. But the thing that I want the board to know is, the upcoming budget year, the last couple of years, this is, last year's about $490,000 for medical services. So this is gonna be about a 46% increase over last year. But it's just one of those things we have to do, and we don't have a choice. But, you know, in the upcoming budget, this, you know, this one line item, you know, is presenting some challenges, but I wanted to let the board know that, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why this is on board action is so...
Pardon? It's why it's to be discussed rather than just on consent.
Right, is to let the board know that it is going up, and it's one of those things we just don't have any control over the cost, so...
So this is a result of rising expenditures that the county has in the area of healthcare for inmates?
Yes. We're provided to provide all medical care for each and every inmate in the jail.
Now, we've got a couple of programs, don't we, that are, that try to get folks out of...
We, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that if you'd like. We have a couple of officers who are designated to doing different things with inmates that are in need of being somewhere other than the jail for medical reasons mostly. We have, it's the pretrial release that Janet Ruffin does. She uses the money to, you know, a lot to bond people out. We take full advantage of that, and she pretty much uses all of those funds yearly.
If they're nonviolent?
Those are nonviolent. They are non-drug-related, I believe, charges. There are several stipulations on how she, who she can provide that service to. We also spend a considerable amount of time going back and forth between the district attorney, the judges, and the attorneys, the DEA's office, excuse me, the magistrate's office, discussing whether we can reduce the bond or whether we can make this a written promise and release these people that are in need of severe medical attention early. So yes, we have several ways of getting them out, and I contribute the fact that we are only at 330 to 350 inmates to those programs.
So I'm thinking back that we had a gentleman that was, he had some responsibility in this area, and he retired. I'm just...
Buddy Poplin.
Buddy Poplin.
Yes, sir.
And so, when did he retire? What's the trend that we're seeing here? Is, has it been pretty flat and now it's exploding?
He retired about the time that we were elected.
Yeah, I remember all that.
So that's where the problem is.
The pretrial program is, has been, the pretrial program through that transition has been fairly flat.
Retiring us or us getting elected?
Both. Us getting elected. That's what he's insinuating.
He did retire. Janet Ruffin took over his duties, but I still believe that's a part-time, a part-time job for her.
Yeah, it is.
That's correct.
And I don't know that there's enough work for it to be full-time.
I think in order for it to be full-time, the county would have to allot more money, and we may have to ease up on the restrictions that we put on her as far as who she can work with and who she can't.
But Aaron, part of this cost increase association is the fact we're going 24 hours too, isn't it?
That's correct. There, it's my understanding they're supposed to provide 24-hour, around-the-clock medical services to the inmates, which is something we should be doing.
So even though it's a 40% increase, we're gathering 33% more time.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, you know, the inmates come in, you know, all hours, and, you know, I don't know the statistics or number, and I don't work at the jail, but, you know, I presume a lot of them have mental health and drug-dependent issues and, you know, need to be assessed when they come into the facility.
We typically see anywhere from eight to 30 new entries per night. So I was talking before the meeting, those eight to 30 individuals are there in our facility with no medical attention for however long they're there before the nurse comes in in the morning. And then they're waiting on them to do the basic necessities, the evaluations to see if they have any immediate medical needs, and, you know, that kind of backs up on the nursing staff.
Very good of these inmates that we have. What's our percentage now that we're still taking in from other counties?
We currently have reduced our SMCP, which is State Misdemeanor Confinement Program. We've reduced that to nine, I believe was our last number. We are assisting Iredale County. That fluctuates between 12 and 15. And then we've recently started helping Davidson County. I think we started off receiving 10 of theirs, but to be clear, as soon as we know, we upfront let it be known that they're not to send us anyone with any medical issues. And if we establish that they do have medical issues, we send them right back. So it's rare that we have anybody from outside of our jurisdiction that ultimately has to go to the hospital or receive significant treatment.
Okay.
And Mr. Church, I believe you asked about mental health and why we are or are not going with that. Currently, we contract with a company who provides what we call Dock in the Box. It's a video conferencing type thing where we bring the inmate to a secluded private room, and they are talking to the doctor over a video conference. That contract is roughly $1,700 a year, and they work closely with the nursing staff, and it has worked well so far. We also have mobile crisis if an inmate indicates that they have in the past several months or... or if they are right currently contemplating suicide, then we have procedures that we go through, and then we call mobile crisis. They come in and evaluate this individual and let us know whether they need to be, remain on suicide watch or we can release them in the general population. All of that seems to be working very well. And every one of the bids that we got, I compiled them and looked at the price difference between just the medical that we're getting now and the medical including mental health. And every one of them were so much higher than $1,700 for the mental health ticket. So, not that they couldn't do a better job than what we're getting now, but what we're receiving now is pretty adequate and just way cheaper.
Well, I guess the question I had for the provider is, you know, if an inmate comes in and they're assessed, and let's say that they have schizophrenia, and they either haven't been taking their medicine or they are taking their medicine or whatnot, is that not a part of the initial general screening they get? And they would be provided medication based on that for the duration of their stay? Or is that something that specifically, I mean, I can't imagine $1,700 covering all the mental health needs out of 300 and...
That's correct.
50 inmates a year, but...
That's a month, I think, isn't it?
$1,700 a month.
Oh, a month.
Did I say a year?
You said a year, but I think we knew what you meant.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, I guess part of my question in their quote is, is if, you know, one quote with it and one quote without it, you know, my question would be, so, in the initial screening, if the patient has schizophrenia or manic depression or whatever it may be, and they have been on medication prior to their incarceration or they need medication, are they not going to treat them since we haven't selected the mental health?
No, a couple of things about that. Our nurses, and I'm sure theirs will, and they can speak on it better than I can. But in the past, our nurse will evaluate that. She will contact family members if there are any, have them bring that medication up. But another thing about that is, our jail does not hold any narcotics. So, they have protocols that allow them to treat people in that instance with different types of medicines and different procedures to help them. But again, we don't, we don't provide narcotics to them. If their family member will bring the current medication that they're on, we don't have to order any. But if they won't, then we have to order some, and generally, it can be here very quickly. So, no, they're not going to leave them just to their own devices. They're going to, they're going to provide care.
Okay.
You know, if you would like to come on up and talk more about that, come on.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, other members of the commissioners. My name is Dr. O'Goh, O-F-O-G-H. I'm an internal medicine physician. I started this company 23 years ago as a one-man show. I started to provide physician-only services for prisons and jails in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Today, this company, after 23 years, has 280 employees. Today, we're not just in Virginia, but we're also in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, since July of 2017. We have been honored to be invited here for this hopefully final stage of the award of our first contract in North Carolina. If you allow me to give you just two minutes brief history about our company and why they selected us, I think. Medico has become the largest healthcare provider for inmates in the Commonwealth of Virginia for the past 23 years. I'm the only owner and the founder of the company. We don't have board of directors. We don't have private investors. We don't have shareholders. We don't use lobbyists. Our DNA is medically driven. That's exactly why we are the only company in the nation that has been under same name and same ownership and the same location that has not lost or settled a single lawsuit. This record is unheard of. This is what caught the eyes of Myrtle Beach two years ago. Because our DNA is medically driven. Why is that? Because me, as the only owner of the company, I have taken an oath. And I hold and I live with that oath every day of my life. If the RFP of Rowan County asked us to just give medication technician administrators and not enough nurses, we would not have applied. Because I like my license and our reputation and the oath that I have taken more than financial reasons. We don't have shareholders to play games, financial games, to increase the bottom line. Currently, we provide medical services for the largest jail in Virginia, has 2,000 inmates in southwest Virginia. Currently, we have two contracts with the Virginia Department of Corrections, state-run government facilities, and we have had a meticulous track record. We have grown organically with our own money. We did not grow this company by acquisition, acquiring other companies or changing names. Talking about Rowan County now, the staffing proposal we have submitted is the best in the history of this county jail. Ever, never, this county jail has had 24-hours licensed nursing staff. Effective July 1st, they will. The importance of that is that only licensed personnel, not certified personnel, who are held accountable to board of nursing, is a much safer practice to deliver healthcare services to our underserved, indigent, patient population in our correctional facilities. Yes, you're right. Our staffing metrics is 100% more than currently time. But the price is not 100% more because we are transparent. We don't have shareholders. We don't have to fulfill those needs that other companies do. This facility currently has three hours of a doctor. If that happens, I'm not sure. In our proposal, we're going to give them four hours of physician every week, and eight hours means full day of a mid-level healthcare provider, either nurse practitioner or physician assistant. This facility, effective July 1st, will have 24-hours licensed nursing staff on-site, including Saturday and Sunday 24/7. They will have a doctor or a nurse practitioner who will alternate with each other and be on-call 24/7. The mother of lawsuits in correctional facilities that you see on the news all the time is the inadequate lack of training of those healthcare providers on-site. Because the big, larger national, multi-state companies, they cut the corners to make more profit for the shareholders and owners. Here at Medico, we don't because I'm the only owner, and I'm perfectly fine with the way we practice medicine. We are very ethical, very transparent physician, company owned by physician. And in addition to what I just said about our much better staffing, we are also providing electronic medical record system. So, there will not be more papers anymore. The benefit of that increases the accuracy, nearly eliminates mistakes by documentation, improves communication between nursing staff and our physician provider, also with our local mental health services. But the beauty of this EMR system, electronic medical record, is that you're going to purchase it under the name of the sheriff's office and the county. If you fire us, which I don't think you will in five years or 10 years, the electronic medical record remains here. Because the license of the EMR, we purchase it under the county. And we're also going to continue to pay the maintenance fee for that EMR system. Other companies, they charge 200, 100, 200,000 dollars. And when they go, they take the EMR with them. And if they leave it here, they will not do any more maintenance and updates on the EMR system. This EMR system is here to stay, no matter who will be your provider. That's how transparent we are. Whatever the cost of EMR is, which we know what it is, it's like $15,000, we pass it, we leave it here for the sheriff's office. We have had contracts in Virginia as long as 23 years. We have had a jail in Virginia, in Williamsburg, Virginia, for 21 years. And I'm very proud of that, and that shows clearly that we truly have developed partnerships with not just the state government, but with quite few jails in Virginia. Regarding mental health, sir. Generally speaking, about 15% to 20% of inmates in this country, about 1.8 million, stay behind the bars every night, suffer from some sort of mental illness that requires them to receive psychotropic medications, either for bipolar disorder, for schizophrenia. In our model, we gave a proposal, two proposals we submitted. They asked us to, we followed the instruction. One was including mental health. One was without mental health. They selected without mental health because I understand they have a contract with a psychiatrist who provides this telepsychiatry services. In our mental health model, which is submitted already, we provide our mental health professional 12-hours a week, three days, four hours each day, that master's degree psychologist or social worker come to the site and meets face-to-face with the inmate patients who are referred to her by either primary care doctor or nursing staff or correctional officers, deputies. Then he, she decides if they need to see psychiatrists or not. This is the model that we have started. We were the first company in Virginia that started telepsychiatry, that we are providing, we have done this for 35,000 documented sessions in Virginia and for South Carolina. We suggested that model, but they have decided to go for the model that is just everything but mental health. But we are okay, we are okay with this model as well. I'd be glad to answer any question you may have, please. This is an exciting time for us, for Rowan County to be our first contract in North Carolina. This just makes sense. You are our neighbor. We are not coming from across the country. This is not a California-based company or Alabama. This company, I drove here four hours today. I'm going to go home back tonight, four hours. It just makes sense.
Greg, these nurses, are these our nurses?
No, sir. These, the nurses that currently work there, most of them work for, work for the current provider. They also, on the weekends, they hire traveling nurses to come from different areas to fill in those time slots. And I'm not exactly sure who they work for. They're paid by Southern Health or whether they are paid by another travel nurse company. We really have at least one, and we've discussed it with both of these gentlemen, at least one nurse that we would really like to keep. And, you know, everybody's agreeable to that so far, and they're going to work that out between them. But no, they do not work for the county. They work for the provider.
What are, so what are the hours for the nurses now?
I could be off by a little bit, but they are, the daytime nurses, Monday through, oh, okay, here it is. Thank you. This is a little difficult schedule to read, but Monday through Friday, the first shift nurse usually arrives around 6 o'clock. The med tech usually arrives around the same time. The med tech is the person who just passes pills and things like that. Then the, I want to say, the second shift nurse will come in around 2 and work her eight hours, Monday through Friday. And then they have two or four people that rotate Saturday and Sunday shifts. They'll have two working the day shift on Saturday and Sunday, two working the evening shift on Saturday and Sunday. And then the following week, two different ones, or four, excuse me, four different ones will be working.
So, you don't, so there's no coverage there from, say, 11 to 7?
Roughly 10 o'clock to 6:00 in the morning, 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning sometimes.
May I add something here in relevance to your questions? Very small question. Currently, the current company provides 155 hours per week of, combination of, only three hours of that is doctor out of 155. And then, they have medication technicians. They're not licensed. They're supposed just to pass meds. They can't do anything else. And one RN and one LPN. There's no coverage weekends or nights. Nights means anything after 11 or 10 o'clock. In the staffing metrics that we have submitted, again, this is without mental health. They have four hours of doctor. Additional eight hours of mid-level healthcare provider will be a nurse practitioner, physician assistant, again, with license. We understand, knowing the fact that their ADP, average daily population, is about 350 people, based on 320, this is what it takes to adequately address the issues that they may have. Plus, they will have 24/7 LPNs. So, the total hours from 155, now it is 300. But it's not comparing apples to apples. These 300 includes one more hour of doctor and eight more hours of nurse practitioner or physician assistant, which doesn't exist, and a whole lot LPNs, licensed nurses, which is twice more expensive than a medication administration technician. So, if you compare apples to apples, our price should have been 600% more. But we are not because we are transparent. We don't have shareholders to feed them. This is huge. It's very, very transparent. So, we're providing a lot more healthcare providers on-site because I like Medico to keep the track record of not losing a single lawsuit.
Well, that's, I think, thanks, Greg, for bringing us the 24-hour coverage because I know people that I've taken in in the middle of the night thinking, oh, they're going to be okay, and then end up going into the hospital. Because, you know, a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of people that we do deal with don't get any healthcare unless they're in jail. So, I think having that break where there's no coverage is something we need to go ahead and eliminate because it's, I think, on the long-term, it may help us get people in for treatment quicker, which will be less cost for us getting treatment to them, the extra hours of them sitting around. So, I appreciate you, Greg, bringing this in, trying to get that part fixed.
Just two more questions from me. Did one of y'all say what we were, what was our budget item, line item for this last year?
400 and, I don't know what the original budget was, but 490 is about what was spent last year.
So, we're going up to about two and a quarter. Okay. And then Jay, are you aware, just from a Rowan County lawsuit perspective, are you aware of, say, in the last 10 years, any Rowan County lawsuits in relation to healthcare?
Not specifically to, related to healthcare, but we have had a couple of inmate deaths that were, that we had to review for medical reasons. that were, that we had to review for medical reasons, because they were pre-existing illnesses and they died in the jail of unknown reasons.
Since I've been there, we've had one of those that is still eligible to be filed.
Yeah.
We've had at least two others who left the jail and ultimately didn't make it. And there's a question as to whether or not the healthcare was a...
But I don't think specifically related to healthcare. We've had an issue related to mental health, drugs in there when we've received patients, when they've been released from a mental health facility and come back to our jail. And they're medicated, but they only come back with, you know, two days' worth of medicine. And so we've had to go to court a couple of times for us to be able to adjust that medicine because it was extremely expensive, what they were prescribed. But I don't think there's anything real major.
I don't believe so. Nothing formal right now.
Is it okay to, who do we have now? Is that okay to ask?
Southern Health Partners is the company now. And you had asked about the line item. I was told, you may be able to verify this, but I was told the line item was 413,000. The extra comes from a variety of things, but mostly us having no option but to send inmates to the hospital. And once they get to the hospital with whatever problem they're having, the hospital sees it necessary to basically run every test known to man. And then we end up stuck with the bill for whatever other issues they're having. So the likelihood that somebody coming in at 3:00 in the morning, who, like you said, usually doesn't have any healthcare outside of jail, is high. They come in, they need healthcare, we have to do something because at that point, we're responsible. So we have no nurse on duty, there's no option other than to send them to the hospital and run up that extra bill. I think there was a $70,000 cost pool to pay for things like that, and that just was inadequate. So this, it may explain some of the costs.
And the way it's set up here, does the, so they don't, the, they won't see the nurse till after they go through the magistrate?
That's correct.
So I don't, I don't know actually how the billing works. So if, say, another agency in the county, a city would bring someone to the jail, who takes the healthcare cost of that prisoner, the county or the city that brings them in?
That is a good question. The general statutes of North Carolina say that once this person has passed the adversary, first adversarial proceeding or whatever, which is the magistrate, and that magistrate has directed us to take control of this inmate, we don't have the actual right to refuse that inmate. So we're required by law to take them, no matter their condition now. To try to relieve the county of some of that responsibility, we've been directed, and I've directed my guys, that they are to strongly suggest that the other agency takes that person to the hospital because they don't need to be here and get a medical release. And if they do that, then bring them back and we'll accept them. If they flat-out refuse, we really don't have a law on our side that will allow us to lock the doors.
Yeah.
So we would take them and then immediately have to call EMS or transport them to the hospital. And then it would be on us.
Yeah. I think, I think maybe the, I mean, I don't know, like I said, this may work out, but if they could see the nurse before they see the magistrate, then the nurse could say, you need to get jail clearance. And then that would be on the, maybe be on the local municipality to take care of that. I don't know. I don't know exactly how that works, but I know that's the way we do it, and I think it's for that particular reason.
I'm sure it is.
Yes. May I make a comment, sir? It's very good observation. There are three main cost drivers of operation of any jail in the country. One is the staff and their benefits, 55%, 60%. Two is the cost of medication. Three is the cost of off-site bills, either elective consults, pregnancies, surgeries, emergency room visits, or inpatient hospitalization. Those three are the main cost driver of any jail operation. I wrote that article years ago in National Sheriff Magazine. What we will do, what we are planning to do with this staffing metrics, which is 100% better than what is currently on, going on, is that we're going to equip the nurse with the right nursing guideline so they know what to do in the absence of the physician. No jail has a doctor 24/7 on site, even LA County doesn't. Okay? So we're going to equip the nurse with the right guidelines, and we're going to train that nurse. Regarding what you said about our booking area, ideally, if the staff, nurse health, nursing staff is adequate, we like them, inmate, to be seen within the first few hours of arrival. But that's impossible in smaller jails like this size. So what we do is that we will provide training, we means medical, for chief commanders and the officers who work in a booking area. So if they detect somebody withdrawing from alcohol, benzodiazepine, opiate withdrawal, opiate overdose, they will not accept the patient. They tell the police officers or the sheriff deputy who brings them there, this is not a staple, we are not going to accept the patient. I understand your point is very, very good point, but that training should be done by the medical provider company for the officers, to make them more alert, in a layman's words, to understand what is serious thing going on. Suicide prevention, alcohol withdrawal, benzodiazepine withdrawal, opiate withdrawal. Those are the main causes of problems, or acute change of mental status. So anything like that, that helps a lot. So the more we do inside the jail, the less will be the cost for off-site services. At the same time, it will reduce the liability for the county and the sheriff's office.
We, it, and you know, the more onsite treatment we can do, the fewer trips that we have to send deputies to the hospital. And we effectively take them offline while they're waiting at the hospital for somebody to get treated and come back, and we have to adjust our staff accordingly. And so to follow up on the liability of transports and doing things like that, from a staffing perspective, the more that we can do onsite, obviously, is better for Captain Hanold and staffing as well.
I just want to ask one more question, so I understand this. So whether the number's 413 or 490, whatever that number is, is that what we are currently paying our current provider in an annual contract?
I believe the way it works is $413,000 is the annual contract, roughly. And then we have a $70,000 cost pool.
So cost, go ahead.
Which pays for outside safekeeping and things like that.
Have to be taken to the hospital?
Correct, at the hospital, the treatment that they get there, or if they go to Raleigh into safekeeping because we can't treat them inside the jail, they still charge us. And once we reach that $70,000 limit, anything above that is added, is billed to the county. The $70,000 cost pool is built into the contract, and once we exceed $70,000, the rest of it is billed to the county, which we've done.
Is that where the, is that where the 490 is coming from, and are we exceeding that?
It, it is where the 490 is coming from. In 2017, our expenditures were right at 500,000. Last year, they were at 480,000. And so in the current year, we're paying 35,000, slightly over $35,000 a month, per the contract, which will end up being about 422,000. But, and that's similar to last year. And then the excess over that is due to exceeding the cost pool.
So then, so then I understand. I guess we're coming up on the end of our contract, and the new contract figure from our current partner is $693. So we would be going from 413,000, we'll use that number, that's about right, to 693 would be the new contract number, plus 70,000 cost pool?
Including the 70,000.
So the 693 would be including.
That's the way I understand.
So we're going from about 420, let's use round numbers, 420 to 620?
Yes, sir.
Is about right. So it's going up either way?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we've just got it. And then my last question is, there's a first year, second year, third year. Could you explain, is that just because of anticipated rise in costs, inflation costs over three years?
Yes. Nationally accepted standard in adjustment of prices for healthcare services in jails and prisons is adjusting based on CPI. And we put a cap on it, up to 3%. If the CPI is 4%, we're not going to ask for more than 3%. If the CPI is 2.7%, we're going to ask for 2.7%. That's very transparent. CPI for healthcare services in Southeast United States medical services. That's generally accepted way to do it. Sometimes when they put RFPs out, they say, we want a fixed price for two years. Then what the company does, they increase the prices big enough to cover those two years. That's either/or, that's how, that's how they do it. Again, we are hoping that, not hope, this is for sure, by providing services more in the house, there will be less transportation outside, there will be less liability and more cost effectiveness. And we can also help the jail administration to negotiate better rates with the local hospitals.
All right, thank you, doctor. Any other questions for the doctor or the doctor?
Right.
You got your doctor yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? All right.
Enough school for me.
All right. Okay, any, any other questions for these gentlemen? All right, thank you for, for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Very educational. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so commissioners, any other questions for Greg? If not, we either need to make a motion to approve the recommendation for new inmate healthcare services provider for 2020 through 2022, or?
Some of.
All right?
Second.
All right, there we go. All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Greg. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you considering it.
Yes, sir. Ms. Leslie?
The first graph, again, details annual cumulative revenue comparisons. And you can see from the revenues that we are trending slightly above last year. We are currently at 79% of budget. We were also at 79% of budget a year ago. So where I would expect us to be.
Which means your projections for the year were on.
Including. The second graph is annual cumulative expenditure comparisons. And we've spent roughly $103 million through the month of March. That is 66% of our budget. And a year ago, we had also spent 66% of our budget. So we're trending very close to last year. The next graph shows the property tax comparisons. So, and this is through the month of February. And through the month of February, we collected 75.7 million, which is 94% of budget, and it was also 94% of budget a year ago. The next one is sales tax, and this one is a little bit different. We have collected through the month of December, so that's half the year, 13.6 million, and we are at 55% of budget. The two prior years, we were at 52% of budget. So we're actually at an 11% increase over prior year collections. So that has trended very well for the county.
And December's, is that the latest numbers we have?
December's information was received during the month of March, and it, with the timing of that, it's the most recent that I can meet the agenda deadline with. So we do not have the reports yet for this month. They, we typically receive sales tax on the 15th day.
So one of two things, we're either, folks are either spending their money earlier or it's just trending higher. And we really won't know that until...
Right.
The shame of it is, we'll be through budget before we really do know.
Right.
Leslie, so December, you know, usually Christmas time.
Yes.
Would the Christmas numbers be on the December one, or would they show up in the January one, or?
They would actually show in December. The reason it runs so late in getting back to the county is if you spend money in December, then stores, depending on your size, some have to submit mid-month sales tax revenue to the state, but others don't. If you're a small vendor, then you have until at least the 10th day of the following month. So, and if you're a large vendor, you also have until the 10th day of the following month for the second half of your month's sales. So the state is basically feeling like they're collecting all the revenue during, so if you're in December, they feel like they're getting the revenue in January, they are reconciling the revenue in February, and they are distributing the revenue wherever it's supposed to go. And part of it comes to us in March.
So we were up, whatever that is, for the year, a million some dollars that time last year. But maybe someone can remember. But I thought I heard that nationally, the December numbers were down. Does anybody remember that? Nationwide, that the sales were down?
Get that on the news.
I only watch Fox News, so...
We had a, we had a good December. Usually every year, I'm cautioning because we have not been hit with the sales tax refunds yet from the hospital and the VA. We just haven't seen those yet. So I'm expecting to have a pretty big dip in, in the way this, not, not in the, well, somewhat in the trajectory of this line, the red line, which is for this fiscal year. But in the next graph, that shows month to month, you can see how December usually is, one of the largest months for us, and then it drops. And I'm expecting that same, I'm expecting a large drop next month. And that's, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Why would hospitals, hospitals aren't, they don't, they are, they don't charge sales taxes?
They are like the county. They pay sales tax, and then they can ask for reimbursement. And so the state divvies everything up and, and they go, okay, this is Rowan County's sales tax. And until they file, because they're nonprofit, until they file, it's coming to us. But once they file...
So they actually have to pay the money in?
They have to pay the money in.
On all products or just certain medications, or, or do you know?
I actually don't know that.
Everything we all pay on them, and they just plan to get them back.
Are they included in the new sales tax plan for labor, like surgeon?
I do not think, I don't think that labor is, from, from what I've read. I haven't seen that, that that's included. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, that'd have to be in his personal tax, when he pays, if he's working for whoever.
All right, any other questions for Leslie? All right, if not, then we'll move on to the next item, budget amendments.
Approve.
Thank you very much. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then our next item, item number nine, child, Community Child Protection Team Annual Report. So been provided for each of you, I know that we've gone through this and highlighted areas of interest, and all we're really looking for, we are, we're looking for a motion to receive the Community Child Protection Team Annual Report for the record. We have a motion to receive.
Some move. Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and gentlemen, that's all I have remaining.
For German?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.